All right, I'm gonna gavel in. I'd like to bring this meeting to order, Southern Shores Planning Board, June 16th, 2025. If you all will please stand with me and say pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
We've got an agenda in front of us here. Could I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for June 16th, 2025.
Thank you. Ed seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Posed? You should all have a copy of the minutes from our April 21st, 2025. Does anybody have any corrections?
I have one, line 52. It's a one-year ban, not a band.
Okay, 150 on line 50.
52. It's one-year ban.
Ah, good question. Okay, anybody else? I had...
No, go ahead.
I had one at line 133. Probably ought to put, when, when, after it was Mr. Mina's application read as, I would assume that needs to be in quotes. And then, I had one at line 450. It should be section 24-27 subsection 4. And other than that, that's all I had. Anybody else? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections of the April 21st, 2025 meeting.
Thank you, Tony, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Assuming nobody signed up for public comment. There is no old business, and so we're gonna move right into new business, which is ZTA I will call on the town's attorney, Lauren Wamboldt, to maybe give us some guidance on a time limit, presentation time limit, if you don't mind doing that for us longer.
Sure, I'll be happy to do that. First, I'd like to note that the applicant for this ZTA is Mr. Mina. Mr. Mina is attending by Zoom due to a prior ban on property by the town council. So before we get into kind of that preliminary step, I do want to just confirm he can hear us.
Mr. Mina, can you hear us? Mr. Mina, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Did, you were able to hear what Ms. Wamboldt said?
I heard Ms. Wamboldt.
All right.
Yes, I did, sir.
All right, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. In regards to why we're here tonight, the board is familiar with this process when you receive an application for a ZTA. This is a legislative decision for the town council. This is a review and recommendation from the planning board. So this is not a quasi-judicial hearing. There's not sworn testimony. There's not evidence produced, and there is, there is not cross-examination. So it is different than a quasi-judicial proceeding that we're here for tonight. In regards to rules of procedure and just how you progress with these type of items, you, it is within the board's discretion to set a time limit, reasonable time limit, for all those involved to provide some comment or presentation. In this situation, it would be the applicant and staff who will both be providing comment to the board regarding this application. So in regards to setting a reasonable time limit, that is in your discretion. I will note that the, a prior ZTA, the town council put a 10-minute time limit on presentation from both, and the town, from staff and the applicant. And this is because you've had the agenda packet, you've had the opportunity to review it. So each, each of them will have a 10-minute window to provide kind of a summary of what their submission was, and then after which, you guys can ask any questions you may have. We wouldn't deduct questions from their time, but that is kind of a reason, what I would say suggests is a reasonable window, but it is, of course, in your discretion. But we do need to set that before we proceed so that Mr. Mina and staff can, you know, tailor their comments to that time.
So we would need to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I think that would be the best thing to do.
How do you all feel about 10 minutes?
Sounds good.
I think that's reasonable. I believe that's reasonable.
Okay, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we will have a 10-minute, a 10-minute time limit to present both sides of the argument concerning the ZTA and present what they believe is the pertinent information for that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Second?
I second.
Thank you, Jan. Any discussion on that? All in favor of Tony's motion to limit presentations to 10 minutes? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Posed? None? Okay.
All right, so I think usually we start with staff?
Yep.
Okay.
I would, I would actually, I had written down a few things, and it may be redundant.
Okay.
If you can just hold for a second, Wes, look at what I had. Yeah.
We get closer to your microphone? I think they're, get a little closer to the microphone, I think they're having a hard time hearing you.
Talk louder. Okay, yeah, I just wanna read a, a couple paragraphs that I had, had done at the last meeting and just kind of switch it around. But I want to remind our board members, town staff and the applicant, Mr. Mina, that we are here today to examine a request for ZTA that would benefit and/or serve all residents of Southern Shores. We're not here to relitigate the applicant's previous variance application, or his appeal of an administrative decision, or his previously submitted ZTA 25-02, or the outcome of the public hearing for ZTA 2502. We will refrain from referencing any individual property in our discussion. This ZTA is not site-specific, and we will treat it that way. This is a legislative proceeding, not a hearing, as Attorney Wamboldt has told us, and it is not binding on the town council's decision, just as the agenda provides. This is new business. At this point, I will ask Mr. Haskett to read in the staff report and then have Mr. Mina present his ZTA. The planning board has received the town staff report and the applicant's ZTA with all his supportive, supporting documents, all of which we have before us this evening. The board will have an opportunity to question town staff and Mr. Mina after they have completed their respective presentations. Once the board has asked their questions, if any, for town staff and the applicant, we will begin our deliberation. If needed, the board can call on the town or Mr. Mina for clarification. So with that, Wes, if you will read in the staff report.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Hope you all are doing well. The application in front of you all tonight is ZTA-25-04, and the applicant is Anthony S. Mina, and the requested action is Amendment of Town Code Section 36-362B. The applicant is proposing a ZTA to amend Town Code Section 36-362B to establish a 90-day exemption for property owners in all zoning districts to submit any applications to the town to seek governance under the Town Code prior to June 6, 2023. The proposed language would allow property owners who own the property, were under contract to purchase the property, rented the property, or occupied the property on June 6, 2023. In July 2024, the applicant submitted two applications to subdivide the property at 75 East Ogwood Trail that were denied. In October 2024, the town planning board considered a variance application submitted by the applicant to allow the subdivision of 75 East Ogwood Trail that was denied. In January 2025, the applicant submitted another request to subdivide the property at 75 East Ogwood Trail that was denied. In March 2025, the planning board considered an appeal application submitted by the applicant to allow the subdivision of 75 East Ogwood Trail that was denied. In March 2025, the applicant submitted a ZTA to amend Town Code Section 36-414 to exempt himself and other affected property owners from having to comply with the lot with requirements established in ZTA-2303, which was denied. The proposed amendment you are considering today is to Section 36-362B, and it is another attempt by the applicant to exempt himself and other affected property owners from having to comply with the lot with requirements established in ZTA-2303 that was adopted on June 6, 2023 by the town council. Town staff has determined that the proposed amendment is inconsistent with the town's currently adopted comprehensive land use plan, and town staff recommends disapproval of the application. Please note that prior to adopting or rejecting any zoning amendment, the planning board shall adopt a statement describing whether its action is consistent with the adopted Town Comprehensive Land Use Plan and explaining why the planning board considers the action taken to be reasonable and into public interest. That statement is not subject to judicial review, and this ZTA does not identify any comprehensive land use plan policies that are consistent with the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Wes.
A copy of the staff report was included in your packets, as well as the application and proposed language submitted by Mr. Mina. Yes, sir.
Stay up there. Any questions of Wes? Anybody have any questions for Wes? I just had, had one question, Wes, and are there any other property owners that would classify as being affected that have come forth?
None have come forth. No, sorry. Mr. Mina's application is the only one that we have related to the matter. We have not had, have not had any other property owners come forth and say that they, they're interested in the ZTA, they want to be a part of the ZTA, we want our property to, you know, be subject to the same thing that this ZTA, if adopted, would put into place, that they would benefit from it, so to speak. No, I have not heard from anyone else about it.
Okay, just Mr. Mina?
Just Mr. Mina.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir. If any other questions come up, I'd be glad to try to come back again later.
Yeah, sure. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mina.
You have to just give him a second to unmute. She's asking to unmute. Just take, he should be on now.
Mr. Mina, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
It is your opportunity and time to make your presentation to the board, and when you begin speaking, the town clerk will start the timer. So you are welcome to begin anytime.
May I ask Mr. Haskett a question? I was muted and unable to ask Mr. Haskett a question.
That's, that's not the format that we're doing. He's given his presentation. You are gonna give yours now, and if we have questions of you, when you're finished, we will ask them. So whenever you would like to start the timer, you begin speaking.
Thank you, sir. My name is Anthony Mina, and I am a property owner and source. I'm not a friend, colleague, client, partner, student, or any other person in relation to any Southern Shores employees, personnel, or their attorneys or board members. And I'm seeking a zoning text amendment to Section 36-362B because when I purchased 75 East Ogwood Trail, I specifically asked Wes Haskett about anything that would prevent the lot from being subdivided, and Wes Haskett hid a proposed zoning amendment from me, which would have posted notice on by the property had Section 36-414B been complied with. 36-414B states strictures of notification requirements in addition to 36-414A. And in addition, and where a zoning map amendment is proposed, the town should cause to be placed a sign on the subject property announcing the date, time, and place of the public hearing for the purpose of notifying persons of the proposed zoning, proposed rezoning. Southern Shores does not have any definitions within their zoning code that would make 36-414B apply only to zoning map amendments. The words "and where" would need to be defined at "if" for Southern Shores to be exempt from posting notice at properties prior to making zoning amendments. "And where" does not mean "if," and it's not a recognized definition in public in Southern Shores. So I have asked the town council, I mean, I ask, I'm asking you tonight to make an amendment to 36-362B, which requires mailed notice to the property owners of a zoning text amendment prior to the Board of Adjustments hearing the zoning text amendment, as you are tonight. 36, 3, um, the zoning code 36, Town Code 36-362B applies to all matters which it is required to pass under any statute or ordinance that regulates land use. The March 31st lot with amendment clearly regulated land use, and there was not posted notice at 75 East Ogwood Trail, and there was not mailed notice to the property owner of 75 East Ogwood Trail. So I am here tonight asking for this amendment to correct the wrongdoing and the fraud Wes Haskett caused by lying to me and not posting notice at 75 East Ogwood Trail as required by Town Code using the English language taught in schools such as Dare County Schools. This problem affects all property owners when you have somebody working for the town that is not complying with the Code of Ethics, which requires the employees to avoid the appearance of impropriety, which means they can't make up their own definitions and sit there and try to get town council and the Board of Adjustments and the planning board to go along with their definitions of words that aren't recognized in public schools that, such as Dare County. Wes Haskett's gone as far as deleting a notification requirement and sending this to convince that he met notification requirements at 75 East Ogwood, which violates North Carolina According to North Carolina law, a court must construe ambiguous contract terms against the drafter. So when you come to Southern Shores and apply for a permit, or you go in front of the zoning board, what you're doing is paying a fee to enter into a contract with Southern Shores to provide certain services, and Southern Shores must construe the contract against the drafter. So when Southern Shores wants to argue something about their zoning code, saying there's a meaning to it that the public is not aware of, they're still in the wrong because they're the drafter of the zoning codes. So what I'm just asking Southern Shores to do is offer all the town residents that were affected by Wes Haskett's misconduct and lies hiding the March 31st, 2023 lot with amendment to be given 90 days to file subdivision that they could have filed had they been properly notified of the proposed lot with amendment. Wes Haskett literally filed a zoning, a lot with amendment to take the right to stop these property owners without properly noting that hundreds of thousands of dollars of property value to individual properties, according to White's rules. So when you think about your, your current zoning ordinances and the way the planning board, or the Board of Adjustments, I'm sorry, and town council is making up these definitions that don't exist, to hide Wes Haskett's misconduct, what actually is going on is a criminal conspiracy against Southern Shores property owners to defraud them of hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I'm just here clarifying definitions that don't exist. Why we're here tonight, Wes Haskett mentioned my variance was denied, and what is actually going on is Wes Haskett's in contempt of Dare County Superior Court because he won't provide the complete copy of the variance records that I appealed. So his lies at the variance hearing are also subject to appeal that Wes Haskett will comply with and is in violation of U.S. Code 15, Chapter 18, 1512, tampering with evidence which prohibits records from being altered, destroyed, withheld. My application pretty much speaks for itself. There is no way that this problem would, if the Code of Ethics was complied with two years ago, when I first asked questions. Instead, I was told a variance was the proper way to ask for an exemption. Went to the variance, Ms. Wamboldt ridiculed me for asking for a variance when Wes Haskett suggested I file the variance. Then you have the Southern Shores Beacon ridiculing me for wasting town's time for filing the variance that Wes Haskett suggested I file, and now I'm here asking you to correct these problems by making a zoning text amendment that is consistent with the English language taught Dare County Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mina. Any questions for Mr. Mina before we start deliberating? Last chance for questions, because I said when we, when we start deliberating, if we need to ask Mr. Haskett or Mr. Mina any questions, we can. So at, at this point, I would like to thank Mr. Mina for his presentation, Mr. Haskett for the staff report, and let's talk about this thing. Any, anybody have any discussion on what we're looking at? I'll be glad to start us off. And we don't have to discuss it if you don't want to, but jump in anytime. Looking at Mr. Mina's ZTA on the front page with the Southern Shores logo on it, Article 1 states purposes and authority. And this is the town template that most action works off of with a lot of these ZTA's that we've seen, and the town's template is normally used as a preamble to the zoning text amendment with statements of facts and aspirations of and for the town. I'm not sure that's what we got in this ZTA. There are 18 paragraphs in here beginning There are 18 paragraphs in here, beginning with "whereas." Within these 18 paragraphs are opinions, conjecture, allegations of wrongdoing, accusations of impropriety, purported conspiracies, and numerous sightings of town representatives. And I think we have heard that tonight in furtherance of Mr. Mina's quest for this ZTA. Anybody have any trouble with that? This entire ZTA is based on the applicant's belief that the town has improperly noticed previous ZTA's. Until a court of law rules on that assumption, this ZTA has no credible merit. And with that, I would move that we disapprove ZTA 25-04 and make our recommendations to town council for denial. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tony. Any discussion? None seen? All in favor of the motion and the second on the floor? Please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And at this point, I will read the statement of consistency. By the action taken today, the planning board agrees that this action is consistent with the currently adopted land use, comprehensive land use plan, as previously stated, and is reasonable and in the public interest. Anybody else have anything on this business? Well, we're going to move to the public comment. Once again, there is no one signed up for public comment. So now we have planning board member comments. I'll start with Charlie down here. Do you have anything?
No, not tonight.
Jane?
Not in reference to this.
No, in anything. We're back into... We're all to ZTA now.
I was just going to ask Wes if there was any follow-up from our previous planning board meeting on the Southern Shores Home with the Sewer problem and the follow-up with, you know, if there was going to be any testing or engineer. I think Ed had said that the gentleman had been here, but nobody got any reports.
I'll address that in announcements when you'll...
Oh, good. Thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, as some of you know, this is my last meeting. Sayonara. And I just want to say, thank you, Sheila. You stayed awake all these years. It's been six years you've been awake. I'm very impressed. Wes, you were always calm and very professional, and I thank you for that. Andy, I'm going to miss your sketches. So even though I'm not here anymore, could you just send me a sketch every once in a while?
Get them in the mail every week.
Okay. And everybody else, I really want to thank them. It's been a pleasure doing this for, I think, over six years. I don't even know how long it is. But it's been a pleasure doing this, and thank you for everything.
Okay, thanks a lot, Tony. We have appreciated your input and showing up sometimes when we really didn't want to. Understood, so we're going to miss you. And if you run out of things to do, come back. You sit back there and have some public comment for us. That's what we're lacking in.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thanks a lot for your service. And I think you probably got to show up at the next meeting and maybe get a picture taken or something. Okay. I don't have anything. Ed?
Nope.
Okay. Announcements, Wes?
Yes, sir. Ms. Collins to follow up. Town manager did get in touch with NCD-EQ. He did receive some information, reporting information, spreadsheets, work that's been going on out there. So he's just going to send all that information to you all, and you can let us know if you have any questions about it. But it looks like they've taken several steps in the right direction. I can't really get into detail right now, but it's some of it's very technical information. But we will, he will get that to you all this week.
Wes, just to back up on that, I'm kind of out of the loop on that whole situation. Could you, within protocol, give us a thumbnail sketch of what's going on or what happened?
What's going on?
What are we talking about?
The wastewater treatment plant. At the last meeting, there was some discussion about what, basically what's going on with the replacement of it and the functionality of it, the testing, all of that. And town manager, you all, you know, talked about it. Since the last meeting, the town manager reached out to Robert Tanker. Robert Tank... Go ahead.
There hadn't been any accident or anything over there?
No, 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 sorry. There hadn't been... After discussion at the last meeting, there was some curiosity about, you know, what's going on out there? Is everything working okay? Do we have the reports? How is it, you know, has anything been replaced? And I think almost all of those questions will be answered when Cliff sends the information from Mr. Tanker with the EQ.
There was discussion because I believe there was a problem with the plant. And then there were several properties that came on the market, and somebody had said that their monthly fee had almost doubled. And so it was like, okay, you know, since it was brought up, maybe. Of course, then the other question is, if you have this analysis and we're laypeople, who will do the translation of what this really means? And then the next question is, if it were out of sync of what, you know, we anticipate it to be, then whose place is it to go to them and say this needs to be remediated? So I guess...
So our town engineer is fully capable of reviewing the documents, the reports and everything, and providing us, letting us know, giving us his opinion on it, which we may do. But I think after you see the information, it appears to me that they have replaced a lot of the equipment out there. And it looks like they've turned things around. So if we need to get the town engineer involved, we will. And again, I know at one point there was some discussion about amending Chapter 32, which addresses utilities in the Town Code. And we fully intend on doing that to address things like this.
Andy, can I ask a question? I don't know if this is... Wes, I've been following only distantly the Entry Corridor Committee, and I have just, because of travel, have not been able to attend any of the meetings. As that committee moves forward, is the, will the planning board be involved in recommendations or in consultation with the Entrance Corridor Committee or not?
Possibly. If it comes, if amendments to our zoning ordinance, like with signage requirements or landscaping requirements, anything like that, any of our development standards or parts of the zoning ordinance, if any recommendations come out of that committee that we need to make some changes, then absolutely they will have to come to you all.
So we should prospectively pay attention to it so we understand the reasoning and so forth?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I don't think it would hurt to see. I think we have, there is a page on our website that's dedicated to that committee, and there are meeting minutes. I think all but maybe the last meeting or two.
And there's the questionnaire.
The minutes are there. We did a survey. The survey closed, I think, last week. So as of this point, the committee is assessing the results from that survey. And I think the next meeting is supposed to be somewhere around the second or third week of July. It hasn't been set yet.
I have that on my calendar. I just, I was just going to say, I don't have any fixed views on this. I'm interested in the report and to be helpful if we can.
Yep, so...
You know, Michael's, you know, on the board, so he can maybe give us up that...
Maybe schedule that or something like that. Or just have an eye on it so that we're ready when, if there's any action for us.
Yes, sir. Tony, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your service to the town. Thank you for all you've done. You started on the Historic Landmarks Commission as well, and that seat's going to, whoever sits in that seat has got big shoes to fill. So thank you for your time and your service to the town.
It's a pleasure working with you.
And then lastly, at the last planning board meeting, we also kind of touched on, and there was a little bit of discussion about our commercial design standards and the limitations, the downzoning limitations that were implemented with Session Law 2024-57. That is a very active area of legislation. There were multiple bills filed in this session that may repeal those downzoning limitations on local governments. So we're just going to keep our eye on that and kind of address it on a case-by-case basis if we have to going forward.
All right. Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. Oh, and then last thing, I'm sorry. The next regular, I'm sorry. Next regular meeting is scheduled for July 21, 2025. We may have another town-initiated ZTA for modernizing the Town Code for you. I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tony? Once again, it's been a real pleasure working with you. And you've always been anxious to adjourn this dag on meeting. Due to honors.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Submoved. Second.
Second.
Charlie seconds.
Over.
Thank you. We didn't even vote. All right. Thank you. Thank you all.